Welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting. It's Monday, July 13th, 6:00 p.m. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Section 3820, to join the meeting, you can join us by dialing 1-240-490-4492. And the PIN number is 248-884-062 with the pound sign. Is anyone, DCTV is recording this meeting for us? Is anyone else on the line that's recording? Okay, hearing done. Is there anyone on the line? Oh, and Member Hollins, if you would be so kind, Member Susan Farber isn't here. If you would take minutes for us, we did start at about 6:05 p.m.
Did you hear Exstrom?
What's that? No, Member Hollins. To take minutes, yep.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment this evening? Anyone like to make a public comment? Speak up.
I would.
Okay, who's that?
Jason Burns.
Jason Burns, okay, you are our first person. You're gonna go ahead and say your name and your address. And you have three minutes. Gonna wait and see if Member Exstrom would be so kind as to time that for us.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Okay, my name's Jason Burns. I live at 8-Hall Avenue in Greenfield. And I just wanted to make a few quick comments. One, I've wanted to thank the committee for all the hard work they're doing. I know it's not easy work. Looking at the agenda for tonight, seeing two things I'm interested in, which is the opening, the plans to open the schools. I know you have a task force working on that. I would encourage the district to make their plans, even if they're in draft form, open to the public, maybe a Google Doc view only, so that the community can keep up with what you're doing. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was I saw that you had redrawn the district map, which I know I've communicated with you about before. And I wanted to encourage you to move forward with that in some way. I know it's tough work. And there's never a good time to do it. But I really believe that it's very, very important that we address the problems we're having across the district because of our district map. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that. Any other public comment this evening? Going once, going twice? Any public comment at all? Okay, I did realize while Jason Burns was speaking that we forgot to do a roll call, because I'm all out of sorts. Member Exstrom, I don't see Member Johnson on the line. Would you be so kind as to do a roll call for us?
Sure. Let me write everyone's name down. Member Hollins?
Here.
Member Karen?
Here.
Vice Chair Exstrom, yes. Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weidergartner? Member Johnson? Did I miss anyone? Because I don't have my list in front of me. I think that's, no, I got everyone, all right.
Okay.
We do have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, okay. So, we have done our public comment. And we'll go into committee reports. I'm not gonna give a report tonight. The superintendent is not with us. She is taking some personal time. And she has put her report in written form tonight. I will not read that to the committee members. And I would remind the public that might be listening that you can always find our agenda and all the materials for the meeting. They're public and they're available in the school committee section of the Greenfield Public Schools website, very easy to find right from the homepage. And I encourage you to take a look at the materials, especially if you're attending the meeting. You want to know what we're talking about. Anyone want to discuss the superintendent's report? Any questions we need to take back to her?
I didn't have a chance to review it.
Okay, anyone else? Well, we can always revisit any of that too, one next time we have a meeting. What about subcommittee reports? Do we have any subcommittees that have had a meeting recently that need to report out?
Budget has not, just because, you know, what do we know?
Yeah.
I mean, I wish I could say something other than, I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. And I just realized Andy isn't, Andy, are you on the line? Maybe he is. Andy from TMS, are you on the line with us tonight? Guess not, okay. So, we have no subcommittee reports. We have a written superintendent's report. The contract for TMS and moving into our business items is the first thing on there. But again, I don't think that Andy is here to speak to any questions, but we, as a committee, can at least review this. Have folks had a chance to look at any of the information about our contract with TMS? So basically what we're proposing, they are currently working on a 30-day contract for us doing business management services for the district. And we are looking actually to put in place a six-month contract that, or I'm sorry, a year-long contract with a minimum of six months and that can be canceled at any time with 30 days' notice to TMS. And they would basically, for the time that we need, do the business management services of the district. I would, let me find, I have some notes about this. I'm sorry, I'm looking at several different things on my screen here.
Amy, can I just make a motion before we get further into this to
Sure.
pursue a six-month contract with total management services as service of the business manager for the Greenfield School District?
So a motion is on the table. Can you repeat that?
To retain TMS for at least six months, or, sorry, to retain TMS for six months as the business manager for the school district. I'm putting this out there just so that we can have discussion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Who was that? Was that Katie Karen?
Yes, it was.
Yep.
So we have a motion, we have a second for the contract for TMS for six months?
Is there any difference in the charges for, say, six months versus a year?
Susan, not to put you on the spot, but when you talked to Andy, did you ask that question, Susan Exstrom?
So just for transparency, I did have a talk with Andy this week. And we actually didn't talk about that. We talked about a number of things. I don't know that there would be a reduction in cost, although it's certainly worth pursuing. And I do know, however, that it costs us less to work with TMS per month than it does to have a business manager salary-wise, as well as providing insurance and those types of things. My interest in pursuing something with them, and I know you didn't ask this, but I'm just gonna say it anyway, is that I think that they've got a wider view of what is happening across the state and what other districts are doing, as opposed to ourselves being sort of sequestered out here in the boondocks, as everyone likes to think of it. And it would be really helpful to have someone with that point of view advising us, as well as, I think that we can probably improve on our business processes and procedures. And I think a larger organization at this point, rather than a singular person saying, "Well, this is how I like to do this," as opposed to, "This is how everyone is doing it because it's the best way to do it," is advantageous for us. I think we've, in one way or another, we've stumbled into a darkness of how to run the business end of the school district. So that's my promotion of using them. And I think it would be wise, I think it would be fiscally wise, as well as encourage some clear business lines for the school district.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why are you proposing six months instead of a full-year contract? Or till the end of this fiscal year?
Honestly, for, in my little mind, I think that in six months, they, the TMS should be able to get processes in place. But also, I think there's a real opportunity for Greenfield and other smaller communities to sort of tag big fish, because people are gonna want to be moving out of larger communities where there's lots more people. I could be wrong. And it could be that we do six months and get sort of to month four and say, "You know what, we need to extend it for a full year." And I'm good with that as well. But I think six months would be better on the short end versus staying three months.
Are we currently advertising a business manager position, or no?
We are not.
We are not.
Okay, so I guess in my mind, I just think the chances of us in the middle of a literal pandemic, being able to hire, even start the process of hiring someone and get someone, doesn't feel like six months is buying us enough time. I'll vote it in, because we can always continue it at that point. But it just feels optimistic that, you know, starting in January or February of next year, we would be ready to have a business manager actually in place on the ground and running.
I totally agree.
Yeah, you could be absolutely correct. You know, and Amy and I have talked about this, because I like to talk about stuff. What my hope is that when we were seeking, when we're seeking out a business manager, that we would go to a service and have them do a much wider search than just sort of Western Mass, because I feel like we're just recycling people from one district to another. And I think that people are gonna be willing to move away from Boston, or, I don't know, if we want to say Hartford, or, you know, wherever, and come out here. And in six months, I could be absolutely wrong. And we say, "You know what, let's do another six months." And I'm all good with that as well. I think it just leaves us a little bit of wiggle room. I could be talked out of it, absolutely.
Well, my thought would be that we will be in the middle of trying an experimental way of teaching children in a pandemic, and that hiring a business manager would probably be at the end of our list. So why not go for, how long do we, how much notice do we have to give them to make them go away?
30 days.
Well, then, we could find somebody, give the 30 days, and, you know, get them in place, because they would have to move here anyway.
Could we?
Exactly.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Please.
Member Hollins, go ahead.
Could the contract, is it okay to talk now? Could the contract say that it's up to 12 months, a 30-day notice, and it's anticipated that there would be a screening process for a business manager during that term? I sort of agree that if you have 30 days' notice, it almost doesn't matter if you say it's up to a year, or whatever, because you have the 30-day notice provision. But it's good to say that you anticipate doing a screening for a business manager during that time, and that you'd keep them apprised of it. I'd like to make a couple other comments, if I could.
Go ahead.
I agree with Susan Exstrom on a couple of points. From what I read, people are evacuating cities and finding that maybe it isn't such a safe place to be in the end, such dense population. And I do think there's something to recruiting and people wanting to get into a healthier, more less-dense environment. But the downside of a group that knows what everyone else is doing is you can lose your individuality and people can just do what they think other people do. We have a whole set of financial policies. It should be in the contract, because it's implied that our business operations are done according to state and federal law and any specific policies that we have. And the reason I mention, and also votes of the school committee about budget. For example, in the business manager's report, it says, you know, there's, I think what it said was there was a deficit, but they're going through all the purchase orders, releasing certain purchase orders and contracts. And not to worry, because we have revolving funds to make up the difference. Well, the business manager can't just go into revolving funds and decide, you know, to make up the difference. That has to come back to the school committee. And that's the kind of thing that, there needs to be a reminder that we have some guidelines that have to be followed, that maybe are different than another larger school district. So that should be in the contract, too. It's typical, not atypical, to say that you implement the services according to state and federal law, state guidelines, and school committee policy. And that should be in our policy. The other thing I want to mention, two other things from reading the report. One is there's a recommendation that we hire a payroll assistant because of all the additional work that will be happening with personnel, people coming and going, and that it be charged to whatever we're gonna charge to for the pandemic expenses. And I kind of support that. And I want to mention that the last budget committee had a recommendation from the superintendent in the last budget process. We didn't implement the recommendation. But the budget committee voted that they thought it was a good idea. And that was to take someone in our business office with a business degree, who's always holding the system together while we're changing business managers, I mean, sometimes handling the whole thing, and to elevate that title to Assistant Business Manager for a small change in salary. And I think that recommendation should come back and be put into motion also. And lastly, I'm concerned about these vans. We had voted that by the time the vans were paid for and at the end of the year, the cost of the vans would be posted to the
Susan, I'm gonna stop you there, because the vans are not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, but
You can't talk about the vans tonight.
Okay.
We're talking about a business manager contract.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Any other comments from the school committee about TMS and the contract? I'm wondering, Member Exstrom, there seems to be a little bit of interest in a year-long. I'm wondering if you would accept a friendly amendment to your motion?
I'm thinking, hold on.
I could smell the smoke. Coming from your ears, ha ha.
Thank you, thank you. I will, but I'll also say out loud, I think that might be a little bit too long, given contracts that are coming and going. And continuity is a good thing, but I'm not opposed by any means. I think, I think they're gonna do a great job. Susan, I think that you are correct, that there is a piece of individuality that needs to take place. I think that, having spoken with Andy, I think he's aware of that. And if not, I'm pretty sure I made it clear. And so I share all of the hopes and concerns that Susan Hollins does on that particular piece. And I said that out loud. So yeah, go ahead.
You are accepting the friendly amendment?
I absolutely am.
Oh, it looks like the mayor has joined us.
She has.
Welcome, Roxanne, where you been? Where you been? We started without you, where you been?
I know.
It's okay.
I have no
You're the mayor, you don't have to answer that question.
I have no excuse.
Oh, no, she does.
I have no excuse, I have no letter from my parents. I have nothing.
We're actually the fun slash kind of terrifying group, come on.
I will, I'm delighted to join you.
Just to catch you up to speed, so, because we're at a tense moment here, if we have tense moments.
I don't feel like we actually do anymore, but okay.
I'm joking, I'm joking. There's a motion on the table for a six-month contract with TMS for the business management services for the district. And I had just asked Member Exstrom, who made the motion, if she would accept a friendly amendment to make that a year-long, ending on June 30th, 2020, or 2021. And we were thinking about that.
Okay.
And she's, I think that she would accept it, but with some reservation.
Could I make one more comment?
Please, go ahead, Member Hollins.
If we don't know how long we want someone, I'm thinking about Susan Exstrom's response to the friendly amendment. If we don't know if we want someone for three months, six months, nine months, 20 months, why make it a contract like that? Why not say that we're engaging them for as long as we need them? And with a 30-day notice? And why put a timeline on it?
I think because there needs to be, can I answer, sorry?
Absolutely, go ahead, this is a discussion.
I think they, I think that it's because there needs to be a continuity of task, as in, okay, so in one month, we're gonna come back and do this. Or in a month and a half, I want to see this has improved, or whatever it is. Not because I'm, I think it just allows for people to be able to say, "Okay, good. In a month, we're gonna talk about this again." And we don't have to continually revisit. I do know that after, if you have a six-month contract, we have to discuss with the city, which totally makes sense. And I think, but really, for people to sort of, in my mind, for people to sort of think long-term and be able to rely on someone long-term-ish, there needs to be a set long-term date.
I get it, thank you for the answer.
Does that make sense?
Could I speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please, Mayor Weidergartner, go ahead.
Okay, well, the only, the only, I guess caveat I would have, if, remind me, because I was just hooking up as we went on. It was originally three months, and you were asking, someone did a friendly a month, or maybe it was six months, a friendly amendment for a year?
Yep.
Yes.
Was that correct? Okay. I, I think it's really important that the city of Greenfield hire a quote-unquote "in-house," somebody that reports to a superintendent. So I wouldn't want us to continue to continue to continue. That said, because we are, we were kind of left high and dry, and we are in this precarious position of not knowing exactly where our budget's going. A year to me doesn't sound out of the question, but I wouldn't want us to entertain the notion that that's going to be the way it is. I do think we need to, while during that year, begin to search for and find a business director that we know we want to work with.
Yeah. So Roxanne, what you admitted is that we had a, which, there's neither here nor there. We talked about having a service do a search for us, for a long-term person. But in the meantime, but in the meantime, having this service that has access to what everything, everything that's happening throughout the state and how other districts are running their budgets. What Susan Hollins brought up is that there is, she was concerned that, yes, people, we, it would be wise for us to listen to what other people are doing, but we also need to remember the independence of Greenfield. And I absolutely acknowledge that. And so my intention with six months had been, you know, there are a lot of people who are moving, who want to move out of larger cities based on what, everything that's happening now. And we might be able to get some bigger fish with a smaller hook. And Susan was concerned that perhaps that wasn't the case. And so we put a year out there, and I said, "I wouldn't object by any means. However, let's sort of continue on and see what happens within the ensuing months. And however it changes, we'll adjust."
And I have no problem with that. I have no problem with TMS. I think they're doing a good job, and I appreciate what they have done. So all I'm saying is, good, if we're gonna engage someone to do it, let's, to look, do the search, let's do it. And let's just take advantage of the skills and knowledge that TMS brings. And I have no problem with a year.
They cost, they cost less, and we don't have to do any pension or insurance for them.
That's why I'm saying, that's a, that's a good thing for a year. But, you know, going forward, it, we may
Beyond that, no, no. To do something to do. Yes.
Hi, friends, Glenn Johnson joining late, sorry, I haven't got the time wrong.
Glenn, welcome.
I saw Susan Farber join too, hi Susan. The meeting didn't start at 6:30? We started at 6:00, it's okay, Member Hollins started taking notes. And we're still on the, we're still on the first agenda item. I did, I did change up the time this time.
I've also been waiting in the old meeting room from
Oh, no.
The other meeting.
So, yeah.
Where's everybody? I joined at 6:00, finally gave up.
Oh.
So this is
Our apology, Susan.
We are actually going
It's okay.
For all meetings Would I need to repeat the motion?
Let me just finish this and then on the motion. Susan Farber, I want you to know that for all meetings going forward, we're gonna move to a different platform, because Google Meet is a little bit limited for what we need to do. I know you've experienced that. So this will be the last meeting in Google Meet. Yeah, and now we can have you repeat the motion when she's ready. Let's give Susan Farber a minute.
This is the contract for TMS?
For TMS, yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Motion by Susan Exstrom, second by Katie Karen, to retain TMS for up to 12 months for business management services for Greenfield School District. It was originally for up to six months, but there was a friendly amendment that Susan Exstrom agreed, that's 12 months.
And I made the friendly amendment, if that matters. Do we have further discussion? And Glenn, are you up to speed enough? You can choose to abstain if you want to. I'll leave that up to you.
Up to speed enough.
Okay.
Yep.
So it sounds like we're ready to move to a vote on the TMS contract? And
Did we vote the amendment?
The, the friendly amendment, I believe, was accepted, am I right?
It, yeah.
Oh, we had to vote that first, is that right?
Right.
No.
No, the amendment, it can be accepted by the person who proposed it, as well as this person who seconded it, without a vote of the full group.
Member Karen, would you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll move to a vote. And Member Johnson, are you comfortable doing the roll call on the vote, now that you've joined us?
I am. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Excellent.
Yay.
Discussion too, I appreciate that.
Chair Poiety, question?
Yes, please, yes.
Would you like another motion to entertain a search for a business manager within the next six months?
Ooh, put me on the spot. I think that
A few people mentioned, a few people mentioned it, not letting this go, go ahead.
Wouldn't that need to be on the agenda ahead of time? I don't know.
It's all part of the contract, isn't it? And it's what we've been talking about.
I feel like if you were worried it's not on the agenda, we could safely push it to our next agenda. And it would be okay. I also think that we are not going to be meeting for the first time in the middle of August, so.
Agreed. It just doesn't matter.
Right, yes, okay. Yeah, so let's move on.
Understanding we're all in that same spot and want that to happen. But we'll move it on.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Okay, let me get to my agenda here.
Chair Poiety, excuse me, chair. Before we move on, some people are commenting that they, the posting in the agenda say different times. So I didn't know if we could possibly reopen a quick public comment in case there are people is our error, that it said different things, and then
If anything, it actually had its own error completely myself, if things said different things. It's, it's a clock on everything. But if there are people wanting public comment, I am not opposed to opening it again. I do appreciate whoever, Member Karen, for checking whatever your I do appreciate whoever, member Karen, for checking whatever you're checking. Is that the chat?
Yes, it is the chat.
Sure. Okay. So let's, um.
The chat, like the Facebook and the Pinterest? It's the chat?
It's the chat.
Okay.
The chat. Are you making fun of me? I think you're making fun of me, but I'll let it go.
I'm not, because I say the Facebook and the Pinterest, so it's fine. Anyway, let's talk about the chat.
Um, let's talk about public comment. Let's reopen public comment and we'll form an orderly virtual line. Um, who is here for a public comment that we have missed? Come on, I know you're here.
I'm not sure they wanted to make a public comment, um, but a lot of people were saying that they had the time wrong, so I just wanted to reopen it just in case. I don't want to accidentally miss anybody.
We welcome, we always welcome public, public comment. We certainly wel- welcome, um, any sort of engagement, including just showing up. Um, we did have one person make public comment this evening, if folks were curious, and it was about wanting to have kind of real-time shared information about the reopening process so people could keep and, keep track of that. And the other comment the same person made was regarding, uh, redrawing the district map and wanting, urging the school committee to get started on that. So that's what you missed for public comment. Um, and again, I do apologize and I take full ownership of, um, anything that, uh, said the incorrect time. Um, I actually, full disclosure, wanted to move the time to about three o'clock in the afternoon and the mayor gently reminded me that it's not a very good time for a public comment to be made. So I apologize to everyone and that's my full disclosure. I will never lead you astray of what my full intentions are. You have my word.
Dun, dun, dun.
Okay. And for people who have just joined and are interested in what they missed on the agenda, we've only done one agenda item so far and I'll review that. Uh, we've done, uh, agenda item A, which is the contract for TMS. They are currently serving as our business manager. And, um, we have just passed unanimously a motion, um, to engage their services for, uh, the period of up to, um, 12 months? Or did we say up to June 30th of 2021? What did we say?
Up to 12 months.
Up to 12 months.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I think I also just saw Andy Pickett join us, I believe. So he's now on the line, um, regarding. Thank you for being here, Andy. I'm sorry if you were confused about the time like some other people were. Um, and if any of the school committee members do have questions for the business manager for Andy related to the, to TMS's services or the contract, we can absolutely go back to that agenda item now and, and have that discussion. Is there any interest in that? Speak now.
I, I had some comments about. I had a couple of comments about the written report and the question. Um, there was a written report in our package. It came from the superintendent today at around 12, I think.
Susan, Susan, before you go forward, is it related? Is it related to the contract? Because if it's related to the contract, absolutely. If it's not related to the contract, then let's see if we can shove it in under another comment, which, or another topic, which isn't say your concerns are not valid.
I'm sorry. I, I thought we were able to talk about the business manager report. No, it's not related to the contract.
No, I was specifically talking about the contract and the services from TMS.
Sorry.
That's okay. We, I, like member Karen said, I think we'll be meeting again. Um, and we can, we can put on a, we can put on a, um, agenda item to have a discussion around the report.
But there's some important details in the end of year finance and if we meet in another month, those, that was an important business manager report and it's in our packet and there was a section on reports. And so it should be something we can discuss that's on the agenda, reports. I don't think it should wait, but sure.
Okay.
How can we put, so how can we put it in under report? I'm all for it. How can we fit it in?
Well, I think you have to finish your contract discussion and maybe the chair would let us go back now that the business manager's here to discuss his report.
Let's do that. Okay. So let's talk about, um, any, any questions for Andy Pickett related to the TMS, uh, contract, their services for the district?
Let's talk about the motion that we've approved so that he's more included in the conversation.
Sure. We, uh, passed a motion, Andy, to, um, have your services from TMS for a period of 12 months.
Up to?
Up to 12 months. And there is, there is language in the contract that allows for, uh, 30 day notice of cancellation at any point. Um, at least that's what the draft contract, I believe, has in it. Obviously, if we didn't vote for that to be okay, we could change it, but that's how it's written now.
If I could just make a technical clarification?
Please.
Uh, this is what you had reviewed, I believe. Those are bid specifications because you're going to have to bid this out.
Oh, thank you. You're right.
So just to clarify that, that's what that is. Rest assured, I'm not, not providing the services. I'm still doing the work of the business manager, but just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And Andy, to be clear, part of our, our wanting to do this is so that we can do longer-term planning, as in a month from now, we would like a report about whatever. I'm making this up, but it's because we don't want, want to, um, shortchange ourselves or the services that you can provide based on just time limit.
I would agree with that.
Also, we want to talk about the cost after the RFP has gone out and things like that. We're interested in your helping because of all of the, the benefits that you can bring with long-term contracts, but also what everyone else is doing throughout the state. Understanding that, um, Greenfield is a unique community and we also wanted to consider those things.
Correct.
Susan, give us something.
Can I add a couple of other things I recall we talked about?
Yep.
Please, go ahead.
The, the other things we talked about, there were four things that stay in my mind. One is there was a question, and we'll find this out if it's bid, whether the longer term had an impact on the cost. Second, there was a concern about, uh, assuring that whatever prior votes and decisions the school committee has made about budget specifics or policies would be followed. And another was to make, uh, to talk about, uh, having a process for a search and making sure that TMS was advised of that whenever it happened.
Any further comments, questions, discussion with, uh, TMS?
About the contract or about the other? Okay. Contract, right?
Yep.
Right, not the report.
Okay. So hearing none, we're going to close that item and remind me, what, someone wanted to go back again. We're taking one step forward, two steps back. We want a report. Is that correct?
I'd like to be able to discuss the business manager's report, which we received today and has to do with ending the fiscal year, closing in the budget.
And can someone, uh, just fill me in? In previous iterations of the school committee, was there a report from the business manager? Is that, was that a part of the agenda and I've just like screwed up and not had it in there?
I don't know that there was an actual line that said business manager report, although it always happens.
I wonder, is it something that Jordana usually would orchestrate as a part of the superintendent's report? No?
That's my memory.
A few, I'd have to look at the policy. I, I feel like, I feel like there's a policy or something that asks, we ask to have a report quarterly procedure.
I think our policy is no less than quarterly, but it's customary that there's a business manager's report and it's customary if the superintendent wants to ask the business manager to explain the report or for the school committee to be able to ask questions about the report. And it usually happens when the superintendent, uh, is speaking for administration.
Okay. And I'm not just, I'm not disagreeing that the report is important, especially end of the fiscal year. I'm just wondering how this, how this had gone down in the past, like what I'm missing to make that happen. So, um, we can talk about that offline and I will, at this point, allow us to have a discussion about the report that was included in the materials. Andy, did you have something to?
I just wanted to say for, uh, also clarification, regardless of what the, the policy states about, uh, quarterly reports, the bid specifications are, I'll say, more aggressive in the sense that should we be the vendor selected, we will be providing you with monthly reports.
Good to know. Thank you. So let's have a report from the business manager. How would we, how would we do this? Andy, have you, and this is quite, like, what? Oh, um, Andy, would you, did you prepare something for us? Were you expecting to be asked to do this?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I was. And so what happened was, and my apologies, because, uh, I, I was unaware of as far as deadlines for getting things into packets, uh, knowing now the deadline, uh, this won't happen again as far as a report submitted, uh, post-packet dissemination. Um, so what, uh, Jordana asked for me to do is to provide you with, uh, an update as we are continuing to close the year end. Um, so, uh, it is a report that, uh, I believe you've been used to seeing. Uh, there's a munis report and then, uh, there's a report of the revolving accounts. Um, as I say, if you look at the balance as of this report, um, it, there's no cause for alarm, I say, with, uh, I say that balance of a negative $73,406.90 because, uh, it's admittedly with the remote work, it's taken a little longer to do the normal year-end closeout process of purchase orders and encumbrances. So, because if you look and see, uh, in the encumbered column, there's $1.8 million still encumbered. Uh, so the business office is going through with all the administrators to go through and close out any open purchase orders that were issued that were no, are no longer needed, um, or things as far as that were, uh, whether it's a change in the price or, or what have you, uh, to that. And quite honestly, regardless of that, if that were to be the case, um, when you look at the balances that are available in the various revolving accounts, uh, there is enough to cover, uh, those, uh, that balance should that quote unquote negative $73,000 be real, which as I, I say that in quotes, because I don't believe it to be real.
Go ahead, Susan.
I had a few, uh, questions about that. First, I, I wanted to agree with your recommendation about, uh, the need for maybe some additional payroll assistance because of so many changes in personnel and to post that to some COVID reimbursement. I thought, I personally thought that was a good suggestion, even if it was part-time. I had a question about, uh, something that was reported at the last meeting and it has to do with the $79,000 overage. With the purchase of the vans, there was a motion that that would, the cost of that would, would by the year's end be, um, posted to the revolving fund for transportation. And I don't remember the cost. I think it was $50,000 or something like that. And I was just wondering if that cost had been transferred over to the revolving fund for transportation. That was one comment. Uh, I have two more. The other is I don't understand what our guideline is for paying these tuitions, uh, to all the specialty schools and all the transportation. Um, it looks like we're just paying the full tuition, whether the full services were provided or not, I don't understand, because so many of the programs were not operating. And the third question I had, um, had, the third comment had to do with, um, the revolving funds. Uh, generally, the expenditure of revolving funds, we have a policy on this, which most school committees don't have. And sometime in another time, I can explain why we have it. But it doesn't allow the business manager to just go into our revolving funds and use the money. It comes back to the school committee because we have our own policy guideline on that. So those, those are my thoughts. I appreciate you looking at the purchase orders.
Sure. Uh, I can answer, uh, all those. And, uh, regarding the van purchase, uh, I'll admit I was unaware of the funding source of that coming from a revolving account. So I did actually tell the business office to charge that to the local pupil transportation line. Uh, knowing that now, we can definitely move that to, uh, the revolving account. Uh, so that would obviously take a huge chunk of that $73,000 number down. Uh, regarding the tuitions and the transportation, um, with the issuance of the guidance from the Department of Revenue concerning payments, uh, we have been, uh, trying to obtain assurances per what has been required, uh, regarding the, uh, tuitions, I'll take the tuitions first, of attestations as to whether or not these, uh, schools took any federal reimbursements or not. And if they did, then they had to provide detail regarding how much of their cost was related primarily from the PPP program, how much was related to personnel, and then we would pay the difference. Uh, that does not apply though to, uh, OSD-approved placements. Uh, those you do are, are required to pay 100%. So for those that are OSD-approved placements, 100% of the tuition, uh, is being paid. And transportation, uh, just.
I'm sorry, Andy, what does OSD mean?
Okay, it's Operational, Operational Services Division by the state. They oversee rate setting, they're the rate-setting agency and so, uh, programs that get that approval, uh, have their rate set by the OSD and, uh, this requirement, uh, is exempt them from the attestation requirements and therefore paying full. Transportation is a similar thing. We are, uh, I was just sent a couple of weeks ago, uh, I guess there had been, which every other community's been doing, negotiations with transportation vendors regarding, uh, what if indeed they did take any federal reimbursement funds from the PPP program or other programs? Uh, and it's just a matter now of reviewing and ensuring. So I, I can tell you right now that no payments have been made since I've been here to the Kuzmeskis account or to even Vanpool. Vanpool has sent me a, an email, uh, describing their reductions in their invoicing that they will be sending. Um, but the requirement is that it's a test, an attestation that's on their letterhead. So I've told Vanpool that we need to get that from them on their letterhead stating that their personnel costs were X percent and therefore the, the bills that they are submitting to us will be reduced accordingly. And as to the, uh, use of the school choice, I would not presume to just dip in, uh, to the, uh, any of the revolving accounts. Uh, we would come back with a recommendation as to which revolving accounts, should there actually be a negative in the local appropriation, uh, to have the school committee vote to approve. The last time we were in Greenfield, uh, we were, uh, involved, the, the policy subcommittee was developing that. So, uh, I'm, I would never presume to just do it myself.
Could I respond? Uh, thank, thank you for all of that information. That when we voted for the vans, uh, it's in the record about where the money would be posted. I believe it's in the motion. I, I'm just one committee member, but my thought would be to hold up those June payments to transportation and all these specialty programs. It's, it's a few million dollars for us and I, I think, I don't know what the guidelines are, but I sure would like to see more attention paid to who provided services and who didn't. And we're so desperate for money, it's very hard to understand why we have to pay a very high rate for transportation and tuition, particularly to private programs that can get their funding made up through COVID reimbursements. And I would like to see more time spent on that before we close out those. And I would like to see more time spent on that before we close out those tuitions and transportations. That's just my thought. Thanks for the feedback.
You're welcome.
Amy. Yeah, Roxanne, go ahead.
I just, I wanted to address the item number three on TMS's report, whenever you do a change, whenever you're ready. Oh, okay. So with regard to the personnel consideration under COVID and his suggestion for additional payroll assistance, and I, I, I don't have a, a concern or a care one way or the other, how it goes. But I'm wondering if, if you need, if you need the assistance of the city of Greenfield's accounting department and their payroll people, who I think at the end of the day do cut the check, although don't hold me to that. Um, we, we might be able, I'm, I'm also not offering this as a definitive. Yes, we can, but we might be able to assist in that. It doesn't mean we wouldn't have someone else, but bringing someone on new, they may need some assistance in general from, from payroll. So I'm, I'm willing to say that the city accounting department, finance, under Finance Director Liz Gilman, would, would discuss this and see if there was anything we could do.
Can I make a comment?
I'm okay.
Please go ahead.
All right. So I'm curious, why is it that the city uses sort of an internal payroll process as opposed to something like ADP? And I'm asking the question because when I, when I, you know, having worked for a number of businesses that start up, it, it's always sort of prudent to use a service because they know the laws and the things that need to happen and the individual person doesn't have to necessarily be concerned about that. So I'm curious, it, there, so I guess there's two questions. One, is it a wise idea, Andy, to buy, not buy, to add another person? I assume it is because you're saying that. If it was that the city used, used an outside service that, say, cost less than actually employing a person and was also knowledgeable about laws and what had to happen, why is it, I mean, maybe I'm getting too far into sort of city policy. But is, is there a way that all of these things can be done less expensively, meaning we wouldn't have to hire a person? Not that I'm opposed, just asking.
I would say that I have no answer for your ADP question. I'm sure there is an answer, so don't expect that from me this evening. But if you have comments, Andy, that can help, go ahead.
I mean, I can, it is something I'd say, since we are a city department, even though we are autonomous, everything does flow through the finance department. So it would be worthy to explore if that's something, and I can talk with Ms. Gilman about it. I know there are, I'll say, pros and cons and views of, you know, I'll say, using an ADP or Harper's versus in-house. In addition, though, I, I say, I almost want to divorce that discussion from the discussion of this personnel position because, and I appreciate the mayor's, you know, offer. And again, something Liz and I are in regular contact, I can talk with her about. But it's one of the things where we see, and not saying that it isn't the same on the city side, but in the education side, things tend to move quickly and decisions need to be made and information needs to be made yesterday. And so having a body where between the Loretta and payroll, myself and the superintendent, as far as the heightened reporting and other requirements that are kind of related to COVID, we need to be able to have that flexibility to sort of, if you will, pivot on a dime.
Any further questions or comments for Andy to get from the school committee? Anyone? Okay. Thank you, Andy, very much for being with us and answering questions about your report. I appreciate it.
No problem.
I don't think you need to stay on the line. Unless you want to. I don't think we have anything else for you. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay. So our next item of business, we're moving back into the agenda items on the agenda is item B, the COVID-19 resolution. So a little bit of the backstory on this, and you all should have gotten access to this today from me, if not before today, I can't remember when I sent it out. So, let me just grab mine. Okay. So this came originally from the Amherst Pelham Regional Schools. And they have, at this point, had a hundred and forty school districts that have passed this COVID nineteen resolution. I will read it in full as, as quickly as I can, because I think it's worth it. But it basically talks about, we can't be expected to open schools safely without funding for the state requirements for the pandemic preparation and, and, and all the public health requirements. And what is happening here is this, the school districts across the state are passing this and then sending it off to the governor, Education Secretary Pizer, the commissioner for K through twelve, Jeffrey Riley, and then our elected representatives, as well as President Spolka in the Senate and Speaker DeLeo in the State House. And I'm going to quickly read this and then we can open it up for a motion to pass and, and go move to discussion. So the resolution as written, whereas schools are to reopen this fall amidst the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly. And whereas it is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation and material expenses required to do this. Whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. And it would be signed, if we pass it, by all of the members of the school committee. And our school district would be added to the one hundred and forty as of today that have passed it. So I would entertain a motion. Don't all speak at once, school committee members? No motion?
I move that the Greenfield School Committee add its name to the list of school committees asking the state for this resolution.
Second.
And we move to discussion. So that was Member Karen with the motion and Member Wall with the second. And what discussion do we have? Are we ready to move to a vote? No discussion?
I have a comment.
Member Hollins?
Yeah. I will vote for this, but I did have some concern about how it's worded. And I know all the school committees are voting for it, but I'll just say what my concerns on are. First of all, it talks about if the schools reopen, and we already know that we don't have to be in the buildings to reopen, so it isn't clear, because we can reopen even if we're not in the buildings. And what I would add to the first whereas is assuring the safety of both students and faculty. Since these resolutions started to be passed, it's more, more people are aware that the ADA, the American with Disabilities Act has requirements for employers, for adults working in their institutions for accommodation for people that have immunodeficient health. And it doesn't mention that anywhere in the prior resolutions. And I think we have as much responsibility to make accommodations for the adults that work for us as the students. And the other thing that I thought that since we're late with all the other school districts, the majority of school districts in the state are towns, they're not cities. If they need more money, they go to the voters directly and say, we need more money because of whatever it is. The resolution didn't address specifically city schools, since we're one of the last districts to vote. I would have added that the Greenfield School District, which can only operate according to the budget appropriation voted by the city council, does not have the financial capacity to address the new state mandates for opening schools without financial support from the state. However, I'm happy to vote for, for it the way it's written, but those were my concerns about the way it's written.
Okay. So noted. Thank you. Other comments or questions or discussion from the school committee members?
Oh, Mayor Wiedegardner.
Please, go ahead.
Um, I, I share Susan's concerns about some of the imprecise language. I too will vote for it. I just wanted to make note of the fact that I did make two very small edits. They had nothing to do with the content of the resolution, but I don't need to be copied on it. Because I am a member.
I did stumble a little bit in trying to figure out how to address that, and I accepted your changes.
And, and for, for what it's worth, down below where it's signed, I just added that not only am I a school committee member, I am the mayor. So for what that's worth, that's state level. If you add that, then I think we're covered on my account. So the only, uh, the only other, it is all about funding and, and I absolutely concur that we absolutely can't make every change that they want, are going to want made, once we find out what they are. That's another issue. But I also know that the state is going to be strapped for funding for many, many different things. So I'm, I'm fine with including ourselves in that. Just understand that the effectiveness of the resolution will only be as effective as the state and legislature and the governor figure out how we can make this happen. I have enough confidence that the state is not, understands that their ask of the school committee, schools of the cities and towns is going to be a heavy lift for us, of the extent to which they are able to help us is maybe a big unknown. So I, I don't want us to come up terribly disappointed and blame the state one hundred percent for it because we're all gonna probably feel pain. So just, that's just a comment on my part.
Okay. Thank you. And my, somehow I have muted Member Johnson, and I'm trying to unmute him because he would like to make a comment. And it's not letting me unmute him, even though it's my meeting.
Well, send him a chat and tell him to unmute himself. Yes?
He said he can't, and I can't either. It's grayed out. I don't know how I would have muted him, and it can't unmute him. I can't unmute someone else. I have no idea.
I think anybody can mute someone. The other day, we were having a meeting and I accidentally muted someone. So if everybody can look at his number and see if they're the ones who've muted them, like just scroll down at all the names.
Yeah, so we might as well. Let's see.
I, I have a big fat message across Glenn that says you can't unmute someone else.
Yes, I have the same thing. He says he's going to call back in. Isn't remote even fun?
I know, it is. It is. Love all these articles that say, oh, it's the wave of the future. Yeah, if you don't want to get anything done.
He's going to call back in and he, he said he had no comment to speak of for this. So while he's calling back in, do we have any other school committee members that would like to make a comment on this? I would just say, I understand the sentiments from Member Hollins and from the mayor. I do think Susan Exstrom saying she has comments too, and no one can hear her. What is going on here? Glenn's back.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Yes, I can hear you. I think Susan would call that. You know, what I was going to say is that I think, I, I think these type of resolutions have fallen by the wayside in terms of massive effectiveness. I think they're largely symbolic. I wish that that wasn't true. I think there's something foundationally really wrong with creating mandates, particularly for safety of children and people who work with children that are not realistic. And I understand that the state.
Of course I have comments. When do I not have comments?
Of course. I'm going to let you have a comment right, right in a second. But I, the state can't print money, but I'm really disappointed in the way we've prioritized education. And I think this resolution speaks really nicely to that, which is why I will vote for it and why I think it's important that we follow with all the other school districts with the flaws in the wording. I think the intention is really important. I think it speaks pretty well to the frustration that school committees and parents and families have with, with what's happening and how, how the funding isn't happening. And I, yeah, I'll, I'll stop now. And Member Exstrom, did you have a comment?
I mean, my kid's trying to give me an egg roll. I'm good, honey. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, honey. So it's been a lot of activity. I've lost my train of thought. What I wanted to say actually is that I wanted to follow up on the mayor in saying that the school district, of course, can't bear the entire burden of the, of COVID and trying to figure everything out and how it's going to be, of course. And I agree with the, I agree with the, the, what are we calling it? The resolution?
Resolution, yeah.
Right. I also think it's very similar to how the district, it, it would cost twenty-three and a half million to educate our children in a standard issue kind of way. And we agreed based upon budget issues and COVID that we would meet the amount that the city agreed was acceptable or, or doable. And so I think they're very, there are two things that are very tied together. I don't want, I don't want anyone to lose that point that, and Roxanne, I'm not trying to say nay, nay, nay by any means, but it's, it's, you know, we, we, the, the school district needs more than they were allocated to begin with. And it's going to be even worse now. So yeah, we need, tell the state, we need more than what you think we do in general.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Other questions or comments from school committee members? Okay, so let's move to a vote on the COVID-19 resolution. Member Johnson, are you unmuted and able to take a roll call vote?
Yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to do this from memory. I know I need to go in alphabetical order, so I'll done just a second.
It's the same thing I was doing.
It's okay if you don't go in alphabetical.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Secretary Johnson, MES, Chair Proietti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegardner?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you all. I appreciate the discussion as well. Okay, I think item C, I know this is what I've been waiting for on the agenda. So we have this team, the great team, the Greenfield Reopening Educational Advisory Team, of which Member Karen is a member of the team, and she member of the team. And she is going to give us an update on their progress to date. And I know that many of us are looking forward to hearing this. Member Karen, take it away.
All right. So I'm gonna try to give, you know, a lot of information at once, and then go back and take questions. I am on a team of over 20 people, working extremely hard to figure out three separate plans, because the governor and the Department of Ed has tasked us with coming up with a fully back in the classroom plan, a fully online plan, as well as a hybrid plan. So we are just working really hard to tackle a lot of very large questions. And, you know, our first, we have met, I have lost track of the number of times and for the length of time. It is constantly growing and moving and learning and teaching each other and really just trying to figure out our next step forward. I know, and we all know on this team, that people, parents, community members, employers, employees are desperate to know the plan. There is not going to, the commissioner has asked us not to release a plan until August. So even if we came up with a brilliant plan tomorrow, they've asked us not to release it because it will and is going to constantly change. I wish that that was not the truth. We all do. We all wish to be able to provide a really clear, straightforward answer, but we're not there yet. So we are working on the three plans. There, last week, we broke into smaller groups. There are eight, maybe more, subcommittees, including equity of access, facilities, special education, teaching and education, technology, you know, the number of them goes on and on. And everybody is working really hard to make sure that that is, we're moving forward safely, and really just making sure our students, our staff, our teachers, our community is safe. Everybody can see the guidelines. The state has come out with guidelines, the larger guideline is still six feet apart. They are saying you can maintain three feet of distance between desks, but that doesn't include a walkway. So you still need to be able to walk three feet away from someone else. Children grades two and above need to be in masks. Under that, children will not need to be in masks all day. We did send out a parent survey. We got a lot of responses. We are working to compile that information. From a brief compiling, you can tell from it that everybody is really divided about what they think is best for their child, for our town, for our schools. Uh, let's see. I want to make sure I said all of the things that I really, the things that parents really should be, can start planning for is that unless we are not in the buildings at all, the children will need to have a mask, and they're supposed to provide their own. As a town, I know there's been, and the mayor can probably speak better on that, a group providing free masks to anyone who needs them. You know, so starting to get masks, make masks, find masks, that should be on everybody's radar, as well as a thermometer or 12, because we will be asking parents to check their children before they send them in. I feel like, you know, that's a quick overview of a lot of work being done as quickly as possible. Does anybody have, want to ask questions? And then I can keep going if we need to.
I'll speak to them now. Okay, let's, let's line up. I think I heard Member Johnson first, and then I definitely heard the mayor. And I'm pretty sure I heard Member Exstrom. Did I miss anyone in that?
Member Hollins raising her hand.
Member Hollins, raising her, Member Hollins, I am not looking at my camera pretty much ever, so raising your hand is not gonna help. I cannot see you. I'm looking at the agenda or whatever else I've got up on the screen here. Okay, so we had Member Johnson, the mayor, Member Exstrom, and then Member Hollins. Please go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to just speak to my anger at the state for this quote unquote guidance. How is that guidance at all, to ask school districts to put forward three different plans for three completely different scenarios? That is not guidance. That's essentially the situation we're in before we got any quote unquote guidance from the state to begin with, except for the fact that I think reality tells us, there's no way we're gonna have all of the students back in the school in the fall. So in addition to, like, not really providing realistic guidance, they're also causing you all to do work, which to me seems like a waste of resource, which is making a plan for something that's definitely not going to happen. So I guess my, I, I mean, I don't know if it's something we could do tonight, but I, you know, if I, if I were able to make a motion tonight, I would make a motion to, to direct that committee to not work on the, the plan that the state has requested for the full return, and instead to focus on the partial return and with, with a backup plan for going back to completely virtual, if the circumstances arise that that's needed. So I know we're more just in a discussion format tonight, but wanted to share my reactions. Thank you.
Thank you. That's appreciated, Member Johnson. And now Mayor Weidergardner, please.
Uh, thank you, Member Johnson. Those are pretty much my thoughts down to the letter as well. But I also want to commend Katie and her group for just tackling this. And I really want everybody in Greenfield to know that that is happening. We do get these emails from very frustrated parents, and I understand that completely. So I just thank you for doing that work. And again, I applaud Member Johnson's thoughts on this, and I share them. With regard to masks, I think we do still have some cloth masks available to anyone who wants to call the hotline. Don't ask me to repeat that number right now, but it is on our website. But I will also say this, more, more, probably more accurately or more up to date, if, we are in the process of reordering different kinds of PPE at the state, at the city level, I'm sorry, in anticipation of the potential for a spike for the winter, because we are definitely running low. I was under the impression that the school had previously in the spring ordered a significant ma, amount of different kinds of PPE on their own. So if you would, I know Superintendent isn't here this evening, but if someone, Amy or Susan, would connect with Jordana and ask her how you are situated for additional PPE, given whatever we may end up doing for kids who have to be in class. If, if she feels competent that you have enough, then fine. But if not, if you could let us know, it's possible that we could include you in an order. So, and they're ongoing.
I can speak to that real briefly. I know that Jordana has ordered. We are constantly ordering. Last I spoke to her about it, we were ordered, we were waiting. The state has indicated that they expect that families should provide their own masks. I don't know that that doesn't mean as a town, we can't start trying to provide them for the students. They did also tell us to have a certain number of backup masks, because we know that they are children and they will lose them. I'm, I'm an adult and I lose mine. You know, it's, it's part of the process. So we do have a specific number of masks we're supposed to be providing. Last I knew, we were waiting. That stuff was just not coming as quickly as we had hoped it would. And that's true for parents, too. If you are hoping to provide your child, you know, you should start ordering now, because I know we went online, we've lost masks in this purchase, so we decided to order more. And it said they wouldn't be here till mid to late August. And I was like, okay, glad we did it today. I think, you know, it'd be really wonderful if we could have a community support of this, of people who make masks, just donating them. I wish I knew how to sew. Maybe I'll learn. Maybe that's my next task.
Well, the important thing is to make sure they're kids and adult masks, because speaking for myself, adults forget their masks.
Right.
Well, and I, I did just get a, an email message or a text message from Kristi Moore, the Director of Recreation, that the community, the Community Resource Line does have children-sized masks still available.
That's what I thought.
Yep. God, I love technology sometimes. Okay, Mayor Weidergardner, were you done with your comments?
Yeah, I'm done. Just know that if, if you need them, and we can tack them on to an order that we're doing, we'll, I will see if we can get that done.
Awesome. And so we'll move on to Member Exstrom's comments.
Yeah, thank you. I think there's, I think it would be safe to say that we could send a call up to the community to help us figure out the mask thing. Y'all are home making masks. I am the worst mask maker on the planet. I've broken a sewing machine trying to make masks. So please help. My other thought is, Katie, can you tell us some things that have been identified as things that are not supposed to be done? For example, I don't know, could we put a camera in a room? Or could we meet outside? Things like that. Just so it, it's, just so that people know that we're thinking, things that we're thinking about, but aren't able to do for whatever reason it is.
I mean, nothing has been completely eliminated from the table at the moment. You know, there's conversation about teachers live streaming, but then you've got to worry about privacy issues. I know, you know, it, it's a conversation that's constantly going. There are children who's, you know, you can try to aim the camera only at the teacher if they don't have privacy issues. But then you've got children in the classroom. If a child is having a behavioral problem, you don't, I don't really want my kid's behavioral problem broadcast to a large amount of people. So you just kind of have to, we're still working on it. I can't say anything is taken off the table. The breakdown of the groups is really starting to make the real meat of plans. I imagine soon we'll come out with what, if we had a hybrid plan, what it would look like. You know, we're discussing, would we have two days and then two days? Would we have a week and then a week? What would a hybrid plan look at? That, there's no set plan yet. And a lot of the hybrid plan conversations are about money. You gotta have people into clean. You gotta have people, the timeframe has to be long enough to keep everybody safe. How do we do that? Who are we paying to be in buildings? What do we need to, how many buildings do we need to have open? How many classrooms can we possibly have? If we have to have six feet of distance, how many kids can we fit in a classroom? So once we figure out a lot of those calculations, then we can move forward of really laying out the meat of a plan. Yeah. Nothing's taken off the table yet. I, I don't think. I, you know, this is one person on a team of many. But at the moment, outside classrooms would be awesome. We're, that's a conversation that's always happening. I should be happening all the time, not just during a pandemic, but there's that.
Okay, so Member Hollins was next. Go ahead.
Unmute myself. I had a couple of comments. First, I'm very concerned about students and teachers who are immunocompromised. They are at higher risk, no matter what we decide to do, bringing people in, because they're immunocompromised. And that's defined now federally as people who have had treatment for cancer, rheumatoid arthritis, moderate to severe asthma, any kind of kidney disease, any other kind of immune deficiency, and there's some level of obesity. And what concerns me is we have faculty, and this is a, a growing concern that, and students who are, have health risks that are higher than the general population. And frankly, I think we should reopen Green River for immunocompromised faculty and children, and/or specifically continue a virtual option for teachers who feel that it's unsafe for them for health reasons to be in the school, no matter what we do. So I believe in school choice, and in fact, when we-
Susan, I can speak to that when you get a second, if you, if you-
Okay. I want to keep going. The second thing I, I think we have to consider is that some schools may be ready to open. I'm just guessing the high school, because you can have one-way hallways, you know. You don't have to have people passing in different directions. And we may have other schools that have so many students in them that can't figure out what to do, like Newton or For Rivers. Maybe every school doesn't open at the same time. I think it's going to be more complicated for the schools that are really, really full. The other thing I want to say is that while the public schools are all trying to figure out what to do with the commissioner, the private schools have to be completely on top of this. I've only talked to one private school. It doesn't matter what the commissioner says. They have all the guidelines, how they're gonna handle it. They've, and it, and we have a number of very top private schools around us. It might be a suggestion that someone contact them for the guidelines they're putting in place in case it's helpful. I think we should allow parent choice for whether it's virtual in schools, no matter what we do. Some people are, what I hear, some people, they, they're just not willing to send their children into school, even if we've made all the safety provisions. So my, again, I'll end where I started. There are immunocompromised people who need more protection than the average protection, and I think we should really be thinking about that for faculty and for children, and consider reopening Green River now for that reason. Thanks.
So Susan, I completely agree. You have brought up a really important point, and I was hoping someone would bring it up. The reality is that there are people who are not going to want to come back to school for a whole host of reasons. And there are some districts, let's, I'm gonna back that thought up a minute. Um, my personal reality, not my school committee reality, not my great team reality, is that I, as someone else has already said, I think the likelihood of us going back to school with every child in a building is not going to happen. Is just not.
It's just not.
We don't have space in any of our buildings to maintain six feet of distance, any of the buildings. We've measured it. It's on paper. And still have a full classroom. I, I, I could be wrong, and the world could change in 30 days. And I am not the superintendent, and I am certainly not speaking for the team. That's just my own personal thoughts. A lot, districts around us, and I think in our minds, is that there will be a remote program running no matter what. Even if we had every single person back in a building, a remote program would be constantly running. There are some, so that would mean we would need people to teach it. The teachers who need to be making that choice, they could be making that choice. There are districts around us that are making that, that you can only make that choice if you have a medical condition, like you said, immunocompromised, et cetera. There are other districts that are saying, you know what, if you just don't feel safe, that is a viable option for you, and you can make that choice.
I agree with that.
And they're opening. So it, you know, it's a conversation we need to be having, and we, you'll see, if you go onto the internet, on the Facebook, I had the Facebook, you'll see many parents saying, oh, that's it, I'm homeschooling my kid. Well, if we allow the remote learning to happen for whomever chooses it, they don't actually have to homeschool their child. They're just going to choose that remote learning. So I don't know if it's a committee decision or a school department decision, but I think that we need to make a decision that allows our, our community to know that that will be an option for them. So they don't start making these giant transitional plans.
And going to other school districts that'll let-
Right, that are doing that.
I don't, I don't know the percent, and we could find out by survey, but there are parents who will not send their children in yet. It's, you know, there's just too much at risk.
It was, it was in that survey that we don't have the compilation results from yet. It's still, but it, that was one of the questions. Even if everything, would you feel comfortable sending your child? And a portion of people said no.
And I, and I think with the immunocompromised faculty, you know, not everybody is a 25-year-old faculty member. And a lot of people have, have issues. I think that should be an option for people that are immunocompromised to teach in the online program. It's the same curriculum. It can be the same curriculum. But I just think we should make that decision because we've, we've experienced in Greenfield, the exodus of people going to other districts because we were inflexible. And no one knows what's going to happen with this. And gradually, people will- And no one knows what's going to happen with this, and gradually, people will move from online to in-school or in-school to online as their fears increase or decrease. I just think we should have both, and there probably are some schools, even if we have both, that you're going to have to do something inventive because we just have so many children. But one way or the other, I think we should probably open Green River and not hesitate about that and set it up as the home base for blended learning or online learning. And I'm just really worried about adults because we're not talking about it. And that's, I think you're wise for us to just go ahead and say we'll have an online component as a choice. Thanks.
Yeah, I hear you about, you know, everybody's talking about the kids, and by everybody, I mean the country. But I'm seeing the tides turn. In our very own committee, the great team, we are not just talking about the children, we're talking about everybody. There's, it's, we don't only worry about the children, we're worried about the teachers, we're worried about the custodians, we're worried about the lunchroom workers. We're worried about the impact opening a school has on entire community. And it's not to be taken lightly. And so that's really, what's happening right now is we're just making the plans. We're not deciding which one we're going to use, we're not implementing a plan. We are just trying to figure out what the plans will look like, how they will happen. Because even, you know, even if we open a hybrid and we have an outbreak, we're going to have to shut down. We're going to go to remote, or vice versa. If, you know, we're just, numbers are dropping, we might be able to go to a hybrid or not. The thing about Green River is a valid point, except that it still does not have heat.
Well, we just need to pressure to get the heat. But I think we should have an online option, and I don't mind if we vote that. And if it's for 50 children, fine. If it's for 100, fine. If it goes up and down, I just think it should be in place. And, you know, you can dive from this to, it's just a really serious disease if you get it. And people that are compromised should have an option, without question.
Can I contribute as well?
Please go ahead, Member Extremes.
So I agree, people that are compromised, but also it's that when, so whether children show or demonstrate symptoms or not. So my husband has diabetes. I'm not compromised by any means. Kid doesn't show any symptoms, I don't show any symptoms, I come home, Mark will absolutely have symptoms and is far more, I'll say fatal in quotes, to him than it is to anyone else. So it isn't just the people who are teaching in the schools, it's sort of, it's their family and their extended family. And it's, it's a really difficult conversation. It's really difficult, you know. So we have teachers who aren't compromised, however, they catch something from a kid who wasn't compromised, and they take it home to their child who is compromised.
I agree.
It's a terrifying reality of where we are right now.
Thank you.
That's all.
Go ahead, Katie. Did you want to respond?
Um, I wonder, I agree that we should, I have been thinking about this for much time, that we should move forward with trying to offer remote to everybody that can, it becomes an option for anybody who needs it. I hesitate to make a crazy declaration without some guidance from the superintendent. If we wanted to make a simple motion saying something like, we really would like to see a remote option be available to all families who would need it, just so that the community knows that's what we would like to happen, that the superintendent knows that that's what we would like to happen. I don't know that we are in a place to make a rapid-fire decision about that with everything changing all the time. But just to know we have support, I mean, the conversation we're having alone sort of sends that support to me, but
I'm happy to make the motion. Because I think, I think it's essential, and we don't have to say how it's going to be provided, but I'll make a motion that in the planning for next year, Greenfield Public Schools have a virtual option available to parents.
A virtual motion option available.
The reason I'm hesitating to second is because I think Member Karen was proposing a motion that was less of a directive and more of a expressing the interest of the, or the the support of the committee and something like that.
Yeah, I, that's, I just, like I said, I just think it's really hard to make a clear directive at the moment. Now you're, by making it very clear directive like that, you may be getting our community members to hopes up without, like I said, without the input of the superintendent. I would like it to be more flexible, and that's why I'm also not seconding it. Maybe like, we look into the possibility of offering remote for every person who would like it instead of we must have remote for every person we would like it.
How would we say we, if we support it? We would support a remote option for people who want that.
That works better for me, but I'm just one human.
I'm happy to word it that way.
Can we repeat the motion that's been put forward?
Susan, you want to do that?
Member Hollins, what is your motion?
That in planning for the 2020-21 school year, the school committee will support a remote education option for all parents who wish, would like this, would like to choose this, would like this option.
Okay. And a second? Do we have a second?
My second. This is Member Johnson.
So we have a motion from Member Hollins, a second from Member Johnson, further discussion on the motion specifically.
I'll just say, I really support it. It makes a lot of sense. There are certainly going to be families who aren't able to send their students back to school in the fall, even under a partial version, just because of health concerns or their own interpretation of the risks and being, having an option to keep those families in the district and still receiving services, education from us, makes a lot of sense.
This is Susan Farber, just jumping in. Okay, if I change families, parents to families? Yes.
Member Hollins?
That's your motion. Do you object to that, changing it from parents to families?
No, I don't object. But wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be the parents who make that decision for their children, though?
Or guardians, or whatever family unit it is, so.
Yeah, okay. So that's fine.
I think, I think families is the friendlier term. That's my personal opinion.
Okay.
So I'm just going to interject.
Wait, no, you need to say guardians, not, you need to say guardians, not families.
Parents and guardians?
Yeah, families is not a legal term, guardians fall under that legal term. Sorry.
That's okay. Appreciate the input. And we're voting specifically about parents and guardians because, I got a little lost in the conversation here. This is important to have the access available to people who are supervising the kids. Is that what we're saying?
It's parent choice, yes. It needs to be available as a choice for parents who want that choice for their children next year.
When you say parents.
Parents and guardians.
Okay, where are, where are, where are students in this? That's what I'm confused about. Why are we putting them up just for parents and guardians?
The students don't choose their education plan.
Oh.
So we want the ability to choose a fully remote online platform, if that is what works for your family.
Sometimes you got to walk me there one step at a time, people. You got to remember, my life is with college students. Their parents don't have any rights, so I appreciate that.
Oh, sorry about that.
I get lost sometimes. I get lost sometimes. Okay, all right. So what we're really talking about, so that in case anyone else was as confused as me, what we're really talking about is we're pass, we're trying to pass a motion to say we need a remote, exclusively remote option on the table, period, as one of the three options.
No, it's that even if we decide, say, Greenfield decided to open as a hybrid plan, that's not your only option. You, as a parent, can choose to stay home completely remotely for your family, and we will have that option available, no matter what option the students, we as a district decide is best for the students. So we will all have two plans running.
I'm on board.
So could I read what I think my motion was again? For the, for the 2021 school year, the school committee would support a virtual education option for all parents/guardians who would like this schooling option.
Susan Farber, does that sound okay to you? I thought it sounded fine.
Hold on. Yes, the original talked about remote education option, and now we want to call it virtual education option. It's just fine. That was the only change.
Any further discussion?
I'm really glad we talked about this.
And we, you know, I would, I would just, a point of clarification. A motion was put on the table. I didn't necessarily feel like we were done discussing all of the information that Member Karen had given us, so we're going to take a vote on the motion, and then we would still entertain further discussion if that's necessary. But it sounds like we're ready to move to a roll call. Vote, Member Johnson, if you would be so kind.
Absolutely. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extremes?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poyetty?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Very unanimous.
Awesome.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for putting it forward. I think that actually is a very logical thing for us to put in place, and it's a good starting point and for members of the public that have tuned in, that may be a relief for some of them. Although I do understand that our preliminary stuff around the survey that was done is that a lot of the questions were really all over the map. There isn't a whole lot of agreement, which doesn't surprise me, and this is a very complex and unprecedented issue. Anyone tired of the word unprecedented? I got to find a synonym for that, because I'm tired of it.
These undecided times, these tenable times, all of it.
Yeah. Tenable, I like that. I'm going to flip to tenable.
My children are all set.
I like unprecedented because I'm told never in the history of the world has there been a worldwide pandemic affecting every nation on the planet at the same time. So if that's true, it really is unprecedented.
It really is. Wow. Okay. So further discussion on the information that has come forward from the GREAT Advisory Group. GREAT is an acronym, just so we're clear.
Since nobody seems to have a question, I did want to, I've had the public ask me who specifically on the team. I did not give them specific names because I wanted to protect the privacy of people who aren't on school committee and whatnot. But it is at least one representative from every age group, from every building, in all types of capacities, ELL, special education, principals, teachers, contract negotiation, parents. You know, it's a wide range. We tried just community members, people who are really just a wonderfully round perspective of everyone we could really find to help us.
Awesome. Awesome. I think that's great. I'm so appreciative of the work. I did actually, since it seems like no one else has any other comments, I waited to make mine. I, I'm very, so, okay. These are just ideas. We don't have to do anything with them, but I just want to make these comments, because this is kind of how I'm thinking. I'm trying to think about how we really start to actually move forward with the planning, and I feel like we get stuck on a few things. And so the first thing I'm wondering, we've, we just passed this motion that says, okay, we're going to offer a remote plan right out of the gate for anyone who wants to have that. That's going to be an option. We're asking for that to be an option. So one of the things I was thinking of is, could we have families step forward like now and say, you know what, we already know that this is the option our kids or this one kid in our family is going to take. And we want that, we want to know that that's the option, and we want the ability to say yes now. Doesn't that help us as a district identify what numbers there are for remote learning as well as what numbers we would have to accommodate in any sort of in-person or hybrid scenario? And have you talked about that yet? So that's my first question.
So we have talked about it. I think, lack of a better example, I'm going to liken it to the fact that when we, if there is a bus route and your child is on it, we are required legally to give you that bus, even if you never, ever take it. I don't know the legality of asking parents to commit to not ever sending their children for an entire year. Or, you know, it's a, it's something we need to look into, and now that, as a committee, we have really said, this is something we want, if at all possible. So I think that will start happening more because there was indication on that survey that people do want to choose to stay home. And if you look at the, just like I said, just look at the internet, you'll see it. I just don't know what the legality of that choice is. What if, you know, three weeks in, they realize they actually can't do it because it's not working for their job, but we have planned for them not to be there, and now we filled the room. Now what do we do? So that's the, that's where I don't know, but it is definitely a valid point and something to start planning for.
Okay, so here's my next iteration of that question. Has the, has the team talked at all about saying, what we want to do is we want to say to the entire district, all the students, that everyone is going to start entirely remotely. And beginning right now here in July, we're going to start working towards identifying enough physical space in Greenfield that we can literally spread out everywhere and have in-person learning because we've secured enough space. It just might take us until October to have the space secured and the logistics worked out, but we would be able to have fully in-person if we were willing to say, do the first six to eight weeks of the term of the fall as, as fully remote in preparation for going to a fully in-person and safe scenario. Has that been talked about at all?
I don't, you know, the first few meetings were really just understanding the guidance, measuring the classrooms, measuring the hallways, really figuring out where to start, how to get moving. And then we broke into committees, and I imagine that the educational committee got into that conversation more. I was on the Equity to Access Committee at that moment. My plan is to attend as many of those meetings on all of the committees as possible, just to be listening. I lost my train of thought. That is an option that districts are talking about. To be honest, I see two, one of two things happening. We make these three plans, we present them to the commissioner, and they all tell us exactly which one we're required to follow. If they say you have to open September 4th with a hybrid plan, then that's what we're required to follow. I, what's not clear is if they say, everybody go hybrid, if we can still choose the district to stay completely remote.
I see.
So that's, that, and like, we still don't have guidance on transportation. We still don't have guidance on a lot of things. We've got the very little we have. So they're both extremely valid points, and I will bring them up the next time we meet, conversations moving forward. But it's just still so, it's not clear if they're going to let each district do what they want, or if they're going to tell us what to do.
If they come out and tell everybody one thing to do, there'll be so many challenges, they won't be able to see straight. Districts, they have, they have different schools, they have different capacity. They're going to have to allow for that. And in the end, the school committee is responsible, and what comes from the state is guidance unless it's a law.
I mean, it's just like when they told us to shut down in the spring, right? They told us to shut down. We'd already started. We'd already started our own shutdown based on our own town, but I, I, as we said it a million times, and we needed a new word, but it's unprecedented and I don't, I could be completely wrong. It's just the way I'm reading the guidance is not really straightforward to me what his expectation will be for all of us.
Right.
Which is not helpful.
In the end, they'll tell you to do what's right for you.
Hopefully that's the way it goes, but.
Well, that's, that's the way it usually goes. There's too many variations in schools, so do what's right.
I have one final, I have one final comment or question, I guess. And the superintendent in, in previous conversations around what do we do for reopening has mentioned a really good point that many of our families have kids in more than one district. They work in Amherst and they live in Greenfield or any sort of combination of things. And having a coordination between local districts, you know, so that the school days and the hybrid nature of things kind of coordinates. Has that been talked about at all?
Yes, that is a constant conversation. The superintendent is running a lot of that conversation with the other districts that we really need to be trying to present something similar. How, what is going to happen to kids in different districts or different teachers? Like you said, if I'm teaching in Amherst on a week-long rotating schedule and my kid is in Greenfield on a two-day rotating schedule, how am I making that happen? You know, at some point, there are so many little pieces of plans that you kind of just got to start working on a plan and make it a reality and then figure out how to bake the tiny pieces fit. But these are.
I just had to say it out loud.
Yeah, I know. It's a good one. It's one we've talked about for sure. And it's a constant, you know, it goes back to the same with the internet. If you teach in Greenfield but live in Wendell and you don't have internet, how are you making that happen?
Right, right. Yeah. Okay, I have one last thing.
Yeah.
I, I would imagine if we as a school committee opened up some sort of just open public comment sessions or presentations of the three plans or what have you. I'm trying, what I'm trying to get at is, how, do you think we need to have more open dialogue, more opportunity for discussion for the community? And if so, how do we get there? Have you guys talked about that at all?
We haven't, I mean, we did the survey, we did a survey for teacher, our staff, and then we did a survey for families. We're still sort of waiting to compile that, finish compiling that information. I expect that we're going to hear the results from that tomorrow at our meeting. And I think that will give us a good information. If the, if they're still so varied, it may be really important for us to hear why people are so varied. Do you not have confidence that we can keep your kid safe? Or do you just think that nobody could keep the kid safe, right? Like what, are you, are you saying you want to go back to school because the remote learning was such a disaster for you? Why was it a disaster for you? Not because you necessarily think your kid will be, that it's okay to go back, but you know that they can't learn at home. Like what, what are your driving forces? And I think we could hold a two-hour meeting and ask people to call in and talk to us or an outside meeting where people talk, but.
Like first-time caller, long-time listener?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm never against hearing more from people. I just think that, even from other districts, I have a sister-in-law who works for City Year and she's been sending me her plans and information and they're just as varied across the country. Everybody has a very wide opinion. There are people who think, why are we not just opening full-time? And there are people who are thinking, I, we're never going back to school ever again. This is crazy. We're staying home forever. You know, both ends are valid and, you know, that, it, it's, it's a, I don't know. I, I wonder if we would get some amazing innovative idea we've never even thought of out of a conversation like that.
Yeah.
But no matter what, people probably would feel better if they were heard. That's the reality.
Right.
I don't know how much, if you're going to have 40 people and all 40 have a different opinion, I don't know how much you actually can do with that information. But I'm never against getting more from people.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, could, could we break it down into elementary school parents and, and then high school? I mean, could we do it so that we got more things that matched instead of apples and oranges?
That's a, that's a good suggestion because you're very widely different problems, right? Keeping a first grader in one classroom all day is easy in the hand that they don't normally change classrooms, right? They go to their teacher and they stay there all the day. The thought of keeping a first grader apart from other first graders is overwhelmingly difficult to think about. High school students rotate classes all day. They don't see the same kids for their seven classes. So there's a totally different issue there that we have to figure out how to make work. Keeping them six feet apart from each other should be easier. And I put that should in quotes. I'm not sure how true it will be. But, you know, it's a wide variety of obstacles to overcome based on grade.
Well, well, I do think that having an opportunity for parents to express their thoughts before the guidelines are all set is a, is a win-win for Greenfield.
I agree. I think I, I don't know how we do it really well. But I could bring it to the team tomorrow or we could decide as a school committee to try to do something about that. We don't necessarily, that doesn't have to be a task for the team. We can listen to families and present that information to the team itself. They're already working so hard on so many things.
Right. And I, I don't think the burden should necessarily be on the team. I think the school committee certainly can play a role in facilitating public discussion around what surely needs to be a community problem-solving effort.
Well, if I were a guardian slash parent, I would certainly want my opinion heard, especially if I feel strongly on some part of it.
Sure.
Comment for Katie?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
Katie, in your discussion, I don't know if it's come up, but one thing you might consider, because the complication is the movement of students because of our habit of every 45 minutes, you know, switching. But another thing to consider is two classes a day. You know, you have math, just longer periods of time and more integrated options, you know, English, literature and history, something like that. So the students aren't changing every 45 minutes, however, to reschedule so they still get their number of minutes in. You could consider that it's actually a better method for students on the spectrum who have a lot of trouble switching what they're doing every once in a while. So something else to consider.
Thank you. That is definitely on the table of how to make that work better. But the other part that's not exactly clear too is how rigid they're going to be about time on learning. Clearly, if we have to stay six feet apart and take certain hallways, a two-minute passing period is not enough time. So now we have to elongate passing periods, but what does that mean for classroom time? So that's not been clear in the guidance either.
Any further discussion?
Thanks for your effort, Katie.
Yes, Katie, thank you very much. And please thank the team on behalf of the school committee. I think I don't envy the work that you all are doing. And I will actually speak with the superintendent about some public listening sessions that we can do remotely to see if we can hear anything people feel they need to say. I think that's important.
Thank you all for your great ideas.
Someone has beautiful birds.
I don't think it's me this time, although I am sitting under a bird nest.
I can hear, I think it's Susan Farber. Are you like sitting in your garden or something?
No, they're just right outside my window.
Oh, wow. That is beautiful. Okay, so that item, I think we are done. And, oh, I, I guess, Katie, I'm sorry, I did want to ask one more thing related to that item. I had, I had briefly talked with the superintendent and I freely admit I may have misunderstood what she was saying. But I did get the sense that we should be prepared to have another school committee meeting probably before we would normally be scheduled in, in August. Mainly related to dealing with the, you know, the reopening stuff. Have you, do you see in the work you're doing, do you see a need for us to come together sooner rather than, than the, you know, the first meeting in August?
I imagine, yes. Even if we're not, I, I want to say August 15th is the day we were required to submit the plan. So I don't remember how that lines up with our meetings. So we would clearly want to meet before that anyway to hear this proposed plan. But we may have questions that need to be answered before then. I would imagine two weeks from now, we need to be meeting again.
Okay.
That's, that's just my guess.
Okay. I think that's helpful to know. And that's fine that it's just your guess. I'm not going to hold anybody to it. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. And now we're on to the final item under new business, which is the redrawing of the district map. We've gotten, so I want to kind of start by saying something about what we're talking about here. So what we're specifically talking about is which students go to which elementary schools, from which geographic locations in Greenfield. And the one thing I can say for certain, I found it really interesting when I was running for a school committee and even before then and certainly since I've been on school committee, no other issue from just your general engaged or even, you know, only moderately engaged parent or community member has expressed concern about our district map to me. I, I've been surprised. That is definitely the, the issue that I have heard most often from people who want to talk to me about the district. And I find that a little bit surprising, but it also tells me it's something that we need to look at closer. And I'm, we're definitely interested in making that happen. We're here to serve the communities of the district. And if people are feeling like that is something that we need to revisit, we would need to, we'd need to do that. And so I, I don't exactly know how during a pandemic you start this process, but I have the same exact feeling as Mr. Burns, who very eloquently said during public comment this evening that, I, I think I'm paraphrasing it a little bit, like, there's never a good time to start. Or maybe that is exactly what he said. There's never a good time to start a process like this. This is also not a process I would imagine that we could get through in a quick amount of time. And so I'm interested in really looking at putting together actually a new subcommittee of the, of the school committee that would actually start to work on this process with, I would say, a timeline of a year to two years before we would actually implement anything. And right now, it seems like maybe there's not a whole lot we could do. But there is actually a lot you can do to build a foundation in terms of starting to look at the data around how our district map is drawn. And so that's kind of my introduction to the discussion. I've actually talked to already Member Wall about the need to create this committee and asking her to actually be the, the chair of the, or yeah, be the chair of the subcommittee. And I'd like to try, I would actually, I would entertain a motion at this point. I think we might need two motions. One to actually create a subcommittee. Oh, no, and then I can appoint the chair.
No, we don't, yeah, we don't need a motion to do that.
We don't need a motion to create a subcommittee?
No.
You want me to just do it?
The chair can do it.
Oh, gosh. I don't like having so much power.
I think the chair can do it. I'll take it then. Don't worry about that.
So, okay, so if, if we don't need a motion, that is what I would like to do is actually create a subcommittee, appoint Member Wall to be the chair of that subcommittee and to begin now the work on the redistricting, redrawing the district map. I have redistricting in my head because many people have called that when, called it that when they commented to me. It's really redrawing the district map. We're not changing the map of the district. We're redrawing the district map. I know you want to go outside. I'm going to get it in a second, but I'm talking. I'm sorry, the dog is very impatient right now. So some discussion about this? I want to hear people's thoughts.
Yes, actually.
Please, go ahead.
So Susan Hollins, at one point you were kind enough to educate me on why the innovation school. And if you would remind me, I, memory serves, it was, there's a grant that was required to have an innovation school set up. And there are parameters around that and I absolutely could be way off. But it was something that you had instituted when you were the superintendent. And so if you could clarify for me, that would be great. Anyone?
We're muted, Member Hollins.
The Innovation School law, I think, came into being around 2009 or '10. And it was an antidote for, for charter schools. And what it said was a district, it is a whole law and a whole set of regulations. A school committee can designate one of its schools an innovation school. It requires a plan. It used to be, when they first announced the law, the new law, a $10,000 planning grant. I don't know if they still have those. They usually have that with new laws to help people start implementing it. And we did, we created Four Corners, we created the charter, the virtual schools and innovation school. And we actually had a plan for all three elementary schools and the preschool and maybe even something else to be innovation schools because it, it's goal-oriented and the school committee authorizes it. And it may, anyway, that's what it is. It's a law that says you, it doesn't require state approval, but it does require a five-year plan, what the specific goals are going to be. And it's gold, that's a benefit is you're really trying to accomplish something and everybody that comes to work in that school is committed to those outcomes.
And was there some sort of, I don't want to say standard, was there some sort of sign-off that parents had to provide to be able to have their child attend that school? I don't know. I don't remember. I could be completely out of my mind.
Well, what we were trying to create at that time was school choice so the children didn't have to leave Greenfield if parents wanted a choice. And that's, that's when we had the Math and Science Academy as a choice. And it kept people from leaving, which was the goal at that time. I think the guideline on an innovation school is the faculty votes to participate. But if you don't want to participate, you can be transferred somewhere else and it's the faculty that intends to work there that votes to support it. And at that time, we had intra-district school choice. So if you didn't want that, you could do something else. You could be asked to go to a different school. I don't know why you're asking.
Well, I don't know. I mean, so when I look at the map, and again, because you have this background, when I look at the map, there are not students that live closer to their individual neighborhood schools. Like, and I'll use my own example. We live by Four Corners. It's like two or three blocks away. And so Sam went to school there. Cameron also would have gone to school there. However, her special education program was better served at Federal Street, so she went to Federal Street. And that's, and but by virtue of where people live closer together, is it closer to the school? Why is it that students who live further from the schools they currently attend as opposed to the schools that are closer to their house or what have you, don't attend the school that is closer to their home?
This is a really big equity issue across the nation. This is a really big equity issue across the nation, if you don't mind my responding. Because what hap- Because what happens is the families that, where the housing costs are higher tend to have schools that are more enriched by the parents and uh maybe higher outcomes. And then certain schools get tagged, and that's why they have uh busing and distribution is to try and have equity, so you don't have one school in a poverty area where 80% of the children are poverty level, and another school where there's a 10% poverty level. The student body isn't the same and the education isn't the same. So that's why some places try to uh make it more fair, so you don't have one school of all children who don't have any books at home. And another, that's what it's about. One of my interests in this whole process, uh in addition to equity, is actually finding out what, what number of children live over in the Green River School area. Because that used to be a community school, and it would just interest me to know if there's a school full of children living around that area now. But anyway, it's, it's complex.
Well, that certainly, and that's, that's a really good point, and that certainly can be part of the, the data gathering, you know, the information gathering around this process.
I do want to say when we started the Math and Science Academy, each elementary school had so many slots. And we tried to make sure that we had an equal number of children coming from each elementary school and a fair uh representation of females and males. So you can set up guidelines like that if it's your interest.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Other comments from the school committee?
I would like to make a comment.
Please, Katie, go ahead, member John.
So my first foray into school committee work was on the team that decided to move um everybody into, from Math and Science back into the middle school. And one of the reasons we were ready for that move was we really wanted to reopen the Green River School and do this redistricting, not redistricting, uh changing the, looking into this process. And I'm really, really glad to see and have heard consistently from the community that this is important to do. Um, so I'm glad to see it here, that's all.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, awesome, so that subcommittee is created. Thank you, member Wall, for agreeing to serve as the um, to be appointed to that. And I will get you some other school committee members to work with you on that committee. I'm not going to leave you by yourself.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
It actually sounds like member Hollins would be a good one to add to that. Member Hollins, are you interested in serving on the redrawing of the district map?
Member Hollins is muted, but she's nodding.
Oh, there you go, perfect, I'll take that, all right. And I will appoint uh someone else in the near future to that, but, but I'll ask their permission first. I'm not, and I don't have anyone specific in mind, but certainly school committee members of you are interested. Um, I'd be-
I would be interested, but only if it doesn't start till this great team thing finishes.
I know. Yeah, when I did talk about this with the superintendent, I said, we have war, you know, we have so many subcommittees and we only have so many people, so um, yeah, well, we will find at least a third person to, to, to serve on that committee. Okay.
Budget is busy, don't be doing that.
And I see no reason we can't wait until September to start this process.
Agreed, I think a September start is a, is, is a good thing to shoot for, thank you.
And we would like to have the community weigh in with anything they want to say too.
Oh, absolut, oh, absolutely. You know, my vision for this, just so people have a sense, is that, you know, we would do some um information gathering, some data gathering about what already exists, figure out where we're at, um, get some public comment, um, get some folks who uh have, you know, an eye for the detail of it and have the, the um, you know, kind of the work evolve as you get more input and identify where we can really make a difference by making, by making changes. And I don't have anything further than that. I think, you know, the best place to start is gathering information. It sounds like learning a little bit about uh what's available as incentives from the state. It sounds like there is, you know, we have to always remember, we have a school that is offline and does it make sense to bring that back and in what format? So there's a lot of things to look at, um, and agreed, September sounds like a good time to, to start the timeline. So thank you, member Wall, for being, for agreeing to do that.
No problem.
Okay, so we are now going to move into executive session. Our uh formal agenda of new business has ended. Um, and I'm just looking quickly at this. Um, so I do have to read why we would go into executive session, and then we need to vote as a committee that we will go into executive session. Um, we will not do any other business once we return, but I do anticipate we will take a vote in executive session that we will then come back and take in public session. Um, but I do not know, I don't have a timeline on that. So the meeting, as it stands, the public meeting will stay open. Um, we will move to a separate meeting. Committee members, um, I did just send all of you a calendar invite for the executive session, and I literally just sent it multitasking while we were sitting here because I realized I hadn't set up a separate meeting for that. So you will have to go and look for it and log in there. Um, so at this point, what I would do is ask for a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, member Wall and member Johnson with the second, and then member Johnson, would you please do a roll call?
Actually, it was Mayor Weidergartner who made the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Your two southern voices speaking as one.
Oh, my God, I cracked myself up over here.
The point being, the point being, we're all ready to go to executive session.
All right. The reason for the executive session and the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, the reason, um, yes, hang on, let me find my agenda again.
Let me make one up quick. Sorry, sorry.
Uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. That is reason exemption number two. And exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, and the care, chair has declared. Let's take a vote.
Ooh. Yes.
Member Ekstrom.
Don't forget.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Uh, member Johnson, yes, Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Where'd she go? She on you?
Well, I'll go on to Mayor Weidergartner.
Yes.
Member Wall, have you rejoined us?
She was here the whole time.
Were you, are you able to say yes to the, the motion?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, she's saying yes.
All right, passes unanimously.
Awesome, so we will move into executive session. I do want to say to all the members of the public, we've had a great turnout tonight. I appreciate you all being engaged in this process. Um, and I encourage you also to give us feedback outside of the meeting, so we know what you're thinking. And then we will now, and well, we will leave this meeting and we will come back, so GCTV knows we will come back when we're done with our vote. Thank you. Members here, Jean-
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, okay, and there's Susan, okay. So uh Susan Farber, if you would be so kind as to read the um, the motion that we just voted on in executive session?
Yes, the motion is that summer meals staff receive time and a half pay going forward and retroactively for the summer 2020 meals program with a cap of $7 an hour on the halftime rate.
Thank you. And will someone make that motion here?
So moved.
That's Jean Wall, and a second?
Second.
Second from member Hollins, she was quicker. And member Johnson, roll call vote, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes, Chair Prayety.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Wonderful, thank you. And now a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And a second, oh, that was very quick, look at you, I didn't get it out. Member Weidergartner and member Ekstrom, and a roll call, please, member Johnson.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Yup.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes, Chair Prayety.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner.
Yes.
It's unanimous, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned, thank you all.